And here we go.
Perfect. All right, well, good evening, everyone. We want to welcome your Tuesday, February ninth, 2021 Board of Education Work Session. May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill? It is now six oh three.
Mr. Here. Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Ryan?
Here, sorry, I couldn't unmute.
Perfect. Having had that, thank you so much. We can go right into your agenda item, Dr. Reed, two point one.
Okay, I am going to stop presenting the agenda. Give me a moment. And I am going to, uh, let's see, present. Okay, here we go. All right, you should see it says South Eagle Leonard Schools reopening recovery and resilience action plan. I made it a little bit larger just so everybody can maybe see it. But before we get into that, I do want to acknowledge Mr. Bill Miller. In case people have been not following, we are probably for the last whole month, we've been really planning on the vaccination coming to educators as part of the state's Phase One B. And boy, it's taken a lot of twists and turns and, and I think ten updates to the staff with regards to, you know, our, our turn to get the vaccination and our availability. But when, uh, the last week when we were really giving our marching orders, how to get hundreds and hundreds of our staff employees vaccinated, uh, which will be tomorrow, the first dose. I just, you know, if we were sitting here in a room together, I think we'd be giving Mr. Miller a round of applause because if you understand the work, so if we could, you know, I just have to acknowledge because I, he was, did so much behind the scenes work through the weekend and we had to submit a lot of information. You know, a series of rosters. This was a really emotional decision for a lot of people, so there were changes at the last minute. But I can tell you that we, um, his flexibility to really work up until last minute was to get everybody vaccinated that really chose to be vaccinated. So I just, um, Mr. Miller, if you, um, just want to really thank you for all your hard work. So, um, you're so pleased and, you know, and actually just letting I there, I, I, he's probably fell asleep from all the hard work.
I'm full of sleep. Thank you, Dr. You know, I, I had a lot of help, trust me, you had a lot of help with, uh, you know, it's all part of what we had to do, but, uh, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Welcome.
So one of the, um, what I'd like to get into is, um, is really start off and, you know, I'm not going to read everything that's, that's here. What, what I'd like to do is, is really, for those of that, that are listening and that in 2018, we, we, the Board of Education, August, uh, approved the Destination 2023 Strategic Plan. And, um, that was something that was an extension of the first strategic plan. We did it in the district. One of the things, uh, maybe another evening, when I started to a few several months back, look at our strategic plan, we really actually had accomplished a lot. However, I also know that we've had to put a lot of things on hold because nobody could ever anticipate or anticipate what the pandemic could, could do. So one of the things that we, we are, school districts are being challenged with, and I think, what, what an addendum to our strategic plan would be is, you know, what do we say yes to? What do we say no to? What are we going to focus on? Because it really feels like some of the things in our original strategic plan are not the priority right now. And so, um, one of the things we, you know, look, what I started to look at was, you know, what can, um, an addendum to the strategic plan look like? Uh, what are some of the things that we would need to focus on? So when you look at, and I'm going to read parts of this for, for folks that maybe can't see it, is that when you look at, at an action plan, again, because we're not going to go through the whole strategic planning process. I mean, we, we need to get into action, we need to get in action quickly. It's really, you know, what did an action plan do is to coordinate the reopening, recovery and resilience efforts. It's really SCL schools' response to, uh, different areas affected by the pandemic. It's the, um, this action plan is to facilitate discussion. When we call it a working document, it means that it's just, it doesn't stand still in time. As we learn more about things that have been affected, we need to address it. So some of the outcomes we want to see of this, I'll just call it their triple R plan is that, you know, that we open all aspects of our schools in a safe manner, and, and I'll explain that in a moment. Reinvent ourselves to better position our school district post pandemic. Things have changed. We've learned a lot about ourselves and some of the things where we look at is we want to be able to, to navigate through this pandemic and make sure that our district, it's kind of like a company. You see out there, folks have had to kind of reinvent their companies. If they didn't reinvent certain parts of it, that their company was not going to be one of the ones that would survive post pandemic. You've seen people rebrand themselves. And so it's kind of like that business model, really looking for those opportunities of what do we need to do differently? So we survive as a public school district and then rescale areas to accelerate newfound growth. We have found, um, things that we've never thought about, uh, that we could do. I mean, one of the things that we looked at is that we found a, a high amount of participation with our parent teacher conferences when they're held virtually. Not that you can't held, hold it in person, but we've kind of found out that we've got more participation with sometimes with some of our parent meetings because it's easier for our parents' schedule to be able to just dial in rather than try to, you know, find a sitter and, and get there. So to really look at three phases of a recovery plan and it, and I don't just want to say recovery, so I wanted to find them for a second. So we talk about reopening is this phase will focus on the reopening schools safely while minimizing the research of the virus. Some people might think, well, we're reopened. And I would have to say, no, we're not really reopen like we are. We have children attending school. We have people in the buildings. But we really are not reopened as we know it. You know, we don't do recess like we used to. We don't have our, um, our district sponsored events in our buildings. We haven't had a play, you know, and so I just want folks to think that, no, we're not there. So there are things that we'll have to plan for. So then you define the word recovery and recovery is really focusing those areas that adversely have been affected by the pandemic. Now, when you say adversely, I think what we need to do is, is really start to prioritize because this is a multi-year plan. So we have to figure out what has been adversely affected. And there's other stuff, maybe not as badly affected, we'll have to address, but you can't do everything at one time. And so I think we look at really how they refine recovery is really getting back to pre-COVID levels. Okay, that's, that's just because the, got to get there first and then we actually have to go beyond that. And they really talk about resilience. And this is really a lot of things that you look at businesses is, is really capital, capitalizing on newfound growth, things that kind of just happened because of the pandemic. And, you know, we got better at online learning. We got better at, at doing certain things that we've, we were forced to do. And so what do you do with those things? Would you, do we bury it or do we, are, are we able to move forward? So the next few parts, I'm not going to read, um, I'd rather get into a little bit of the nuts and bolts of, of what this could look like. But when you look at recovery, learning and acceleration assessment, I'm, I'm not going to read this paragraph, but I just want to bring, um, a few things, uh, phrases to your attention. I think when, when you, we find that kids are going to come back to school, kids have always been, you know, a diverse group of learners. But I think what we're going to see on a greater scale, when I say come back to school, I mean, when we try to bring more and more kids maybe back to school-based learning or, or, or do things differently, we're going to find out that different experiences over this past almost a year now. Remember, we went into March seventeenth and people have, and families that, that we've respected have, have really been a little bit all over the place with their comfort level of accessing, um, education and, and learning. So I think what we have to accept that they're going to, it's going to be a, a, you know, gaps a little bit of everywhere and, and how do we bridge that gap? The other thing we look at is, I think is an important, uh, term is really flexible learning approach. So if you have, you know, children and their needs are all over the place, we're going to have to look at, you know, about how do we, you know, be more flexible and what does that look like? That doesn't mean lower standards. It just really looks at that we can't just take the same lens and apply it and think, you know, that in a pandemic, we can expect growth if we don't look at it differently. And really, when you look at, um, one of the things that we have, there's a lot of different models out there. So when we look at this, we can't think we could just got a one size fits all. And then we're going to just fix this thing overnight. So when I look through here too, you have to have some shared priorities. And again, this is a working document. I've put it together. And I have shared it with some folks. I shared it with, um, our administrators. I've shared it with cabinet. And I had the opportunity and I appreciate it last week. I asked whether I could be invited to talk to the Celta Executive Board to talk about some of these things because this is my challenge now. Typically, I would have had just a big community meeting. Um, I would have called an emergency, you know, staff meeting and we'd all go to the P A, P A C. But during the pandemic, I can't meet with more than 10 people at a time. And so I've really had to chunk what we, what we do. I actually put out an email to the staff this evening because I not given that opportunity to do that. If, you know, to listen in this evening, uh, if they can't listen this evening to also, um, you know, it's recorded, then go back to it. So, but one of the things I think we have to realize with, um, you know, coming back to, to, um, the district or, or recovery learning, however that looks like, is that people are going to have that first bullet point of really, we have to acknowledge a really diverse experience of learners and educators and both ends that we, we've experienced different things. We have to acknowledge there's going to be gaps. We also have to acknowledge that we, in order to, to do, uh, recover what we've, what we've lost on so different levels is really looking at a holistic approach. You know, it's really taking care of not just the academic needs. We're going to have to take of, of, of the academics, these social, emotional needs. And really staff people have gone through different things as well, even in my own family. What we've experienced and see what it, what it's done to a family member and, and the struggle to recover, you know, is really does take its, its, its tolls. We've had people who've lost family members and that. So, you know, those are some of the things that we, we have to, you know, acknowledge. And again, I think as we, as we go through this, I, you, the other bullet point is that planning collaboration with students, parents, guardians, classroom teachers and school teams. So I kind of want to point out to that little footnote that you'll see on every page at the bottom here. This is a draft. And we're going to look at the yellow highlighted areas of this template that, that will resemble our strategic plans. Because there really are areas that are going to need to be addressed. The bullet points below, below the highlighted areas are just for us to discuss. So I don't want folks to think is that they've not had input in a plan, but I got to start the conversation somewhere. And I think one of the things that, um, I want to do is, is show examples of what it could look like. And for those people listening, not just the Board of Education administrators, I'm hoping as we go through this that you're writing down some ideas of things that, um, that, you know, that you want to give an input on. I mean, sure, we're going to have to have some focus meetings. We're going to have to send out surveys. We're not going to be able to gather information like we were typically do. So, but, but I do want people to know that we will be gathering input. We cannot do this alone. But I also want folks to know is we don't have forever to get this done. And I think that's the piece, as I call it, the fix the flat as you move model. So there's going to be things that we need to keep moving. We also need to keep planning at the same time. So what I'd like to do is when we look at Phase One is we talk about reopening schools safely while minimizing the research of the virus. You're going to see some things over here. Here's the template. First of all, you got to have a plan. You know, who's going to be responsible for this? What's the timeline? Remember, it's going to be a multi-year plan. You know, what, what's going to be the things we need to take care of first? What are the resources required? Whether that's software, whether that's human capital, whether it's people. Obviously, there's always had to be a success criteria and then the estimate costs and funding source. So these acronyms you're going to see here, I think the important point that I want everybody to know is, um, school districts are getting federal dollars in order to, uh, address COVID pandemic and recovery efforts. So I think that's the piece. I'll repeat it. COVID pandemic and recovery efforts. And so I think that's the piece is if you don't have a plan, you are not going to capitalize on those recovery efforts that you need to do. And so what, what I want to take you through, remember, and, and again, in, in my mind, broke it down into three different phases and these phases will actually, don't finish one phase and move on the debt, onto the next. They're going to be intertwined. So we got to think about, you know, what do we need to do about reopening? What do we need to do about recovery? And what do we need to do with newfound growth that we just don't want to bury and move forward? So I'm just going to give you some examples where remember the yellow areas, I think, you know, there could be more yellow areas. But for the purpose of time, I just want to get started. What's below the yellow area is just kind of given ideas to generate discussions. So I do think with reopening, obviously with our school operations, we are still going to have to address health and safety measures. Let me just give you a few examples. So we actually have some school teams already. We have building leadership teams. We have other structures. So my question to folks is rhetorical, is that, you know, do we, do we, you know, have a new structure of, of having, you know, uh, reopening teams that give us the feedback, what we need to do? Or do we take our current structures, like our building leadership teams? Every building has them. And do we repurpose what they need to start to focus on a little bit? And I think that's the piece is that you got, we want to be careful that we don't have layers of different teams and then nobody is talking to each other. So, I mean, I would be recommending that we look at our current structures and, and refocus. And so when I talk about reopening, you, you know, really, we, we didn't do recess in the fall and obviously in the, in the, in the winter now. But, you know, moving forward, you know, we've learned a lot. I'm not saying we go back to how we did recess before, but we do have families and we have children. That part of the day is important to them. Lunch, lunch is in the classroom a little bit, but do we migrate it out into the cafeteria and can we do it safely? And I think we can, you know, and so those are things that I talk about. Again, I can go on and on, but those are some of the things that I think when we talk about reopen, we're not really reopen and we still need to, to work on that. I think this next phase, um, as we, we, we've talked about, um, air conditioning in our buildings. In fact, uh, thank you to the communities of South Eagle Leonard's who passed a dual levy, which is going to allow us to put air conditioning in our buildings. But this is an opportunity, um, to not just put air, air conditioning in our buildings. Is, you know, some of this money can be utilized because of health and safety measures with air quality. And so that's, and, and Mike, I know Mike Murphy's on, on, um, on here. If, if, I don't know if you want to say a few words with regards to, you know, how districts are approaching, looking at, you know, air conditioning, what does it mean by just put air conditioning in? And what do we mean by air quality in that process?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm talking to the other district business managers and talking to some of the air conditioning contractors. Air quality is a big piece right now. Not that we don't already have some air quality. There's plenty of filters and we're, we've been switching them up more than normal this year just because of what's going on with COVID to, to and letting the fans run constantly to make sure that air quality, but installing brand new air conditioning, we have the opportunity to raise that amount of filtering that we can do. There's also things like lighting that kills bacteria and some different things like that. Have a filter, you can up the filter, all those types of things that we're going to be looking at, especially with some ESSER money that's coming in from the government. So that, that'll help improve our project even further.
So, so the, and the next thing when you look at, and this was part of the original strategic plan vision to have an onsite clinic. But I think, um, this is also an allowable use with regards to looking at, you know, having an onsite mid, uh, quick bag clinic. Uh, yes, we have nurses and, uh, yes, we have folks from PSI. But what we are seeing is, uh, not just in our district, is that some of our folks are seeing, you know, a significant amount of students a day. And sometimes some of those things are air infections, they're, 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 um, you know, strep throat and different things. And typically as a working mom, what would happen is you get a phone call from, uh, you know, the clinic and then I got to figure out, you know, got to make that appointment, go the next day or not even get, be able to get their appointment. And, and, and so what we're seeing is, um, I think especially because of also the pandemic, the need to have some type of services for students and staff onsite. You know, I'll give an example, uh, Menter has a cardinal clinic. Uh, actually, when my son worked out there, you know, he was a teacher, but, you know, went to, he didn't have time to go to the doctor, went to their clinic, got his medicine ASAP, was back in the classroom within 24 hours and, and things like that. So I think some of the things we're, we're, you know, we're looking at is, as we reopen. I, you know, um, you know, you have rapid strep testing. You have different things that could be available. Obviously, this is in its infancy and I'm exploring it with regards to legalities and other things, but it really, I think, needs to be a part of the plan because of the world in which we live and how things have changed. So, um, again, there's going to probably be more things with reopening, but, um, this is something I just want to give a snapshot to folks to really think in three ways of, of, of reopening, again, recovery and resilience. I believe.
Linda, that's interesting. You brought that up when I read that. Um, when we did the Capitol Conference, there was a, um, session about the school districts throughout Ohio who are adapting the med clinics and the services that they provide to the students, the families. And then one district, I don't know why I'm thinking near, maybe down in Ashtray Buell or something. They had a collaborative effort with the county and the city to where they were servicing over the weekend and stuff like that. So that's interesting.
Yeah, there was, there's a few different models out there. Um, we're actually going to do a field trip to Youngstown City Schools. They have it at a couple of their high schools in different places and there's, it, it just really actually is layers. But I, I think I do want to bring up a point is really what should drive a, um, a, a clinic is really the needs of your own community. And then you can see by three point four, you should really conduct a needs assessment of staff and families of really what, you know, you know, what our needs might be. And then you establish, uh, those services based on really what, you know, what folks needs and what our families and what our staff needs. So that is something, again, um, and you can see I've kind of put names by folks. You know, they might change, but really you, you got to, you know, if, if we're going to focus on this for the next few years, I mean, this is going to be our focus and, and different things. So, um, when, when you look at recovery, I do think there's going to be a lot of work in this area. And, um, again, I think it's going to be, it has to be a collaborative effort, but I want us to focus on the yellow. Yellow things is when, in, in a, and I'll give examples why. So when you look at, you know, recovery and just different things, really, you know, what the curriculum and the standards, you know, so do we, I was talking to some teachers the other day, you know, what somebody would have taught now in a typical year is not where the kids are at. So that compounds itself if it's in a preview. Sure. It's not that people aren't trying to teach what they're supposed to be, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. So I think, you know, we have pacing guides. So, you know, we need to look at that stuff and what are going to be those essential skills? We cannot teach everything, but what are those essential skills that are needed to be able to, um, move on to the next level or to the next grade level and things like that. So it can't be, let's, we have, we, we, you know, we throw in everything. We're going to teach everything like we always did. So those are some of the things they call it, like essential skills, um, priority. There's different, there's different types of, of curriculum out there. I mean, they do kind, um, uh, recovery curriculum, which is the four Rs, routines, relationships, relevance and reflection. So again, the example here is just really saying that we need to prioritize and vertically do it to know how, what are we going to focus on? Then there, again, there might be things that we look at curriculum and standards. I gave this as an example, you know, a development of new courses. You know, you talk about, we've been through a pandemic, you thought depression and just different things. You know, do we have an art therapy course? Is that something we want to add to it? I know there's some very talented, passionate art teachers we have in the district that would love the opportunity. And so that's the piece where you talk about capitalizing on, on certain things to be able, you know, to, to look at what we're offering. Is it relevant? And not saying things have to go away, you know, maybe we add to it and we enhance it. So the other thing we move to again is instruction. For those of those with the, the acronyms, I just want to go over here when it says cable, Thompson, Continenza, Principals, Teacher Leaders. CL stands for Content Leaders. That's at the elementary level. DF stands for, um, uh, Department Facilitators. That's I believe at the junior high. And then DC is Department Coordinators. Only reason why I bring that up is that really, when you look at making these decisions, it's going to have to be a collaborative effort. So the idea is, is how do we, um, keep getting this, you know, this is here. You know, we need to identify what instructional programs that we want maybe for recovery learning. When you look at two point two, it's not so much programs is what's, what's going to be our strategies. I'm not saying, and I don't want people to panic out there that might be listening. I'm not saying we're going to do all these. But we, we have to all be rolling in the same direction. We can't have one building doing one thing over here at K three while another building doing something else. And we have to really look at certain, what they, you know, high yield instructional strategies that will get us the most acceleration and learning. I, I do want, I do want to show one thing. I'm going to stop presenting this one because I think, you know, and, and you'll see holistically, you know, people's heads might be spinning, but this is where I'm talking about where we need professional development in these areas. Our staff, we chose certain models and we choose certain things. We're going to need to plan for stuff on a multi-level. So let me stop presenting this for a moment because I want to show you, um, something else. Hold on. A moment here. And okay, so let me make this a little bit bigger. And I'm giving just examples here. So a lot of times it's like, you know, if you really want to accelerate learning, there's a difference between acceleration and remediation. And so that's the piece when we look at professional development and how we approach. And just showing you, and I give credit to the book that it comes from, um, Learning in the Fast Lane, Eight Ways to Put Students on the Road to Academic Success. So you could, you know, I'll just read a few things here, but they really talk about what is acceleration versus remediation. And, um, just with basic skills, uh, skills are handpicked. Remember, I talked about essential and priority. Adjust in time for new concepts. Students apply skills immediately. In remediation, instruction attempts to reteach every missing skill. Okay, it's like the train is moving, but if we're reteaching every missing skill, the train is moving and we just never get a chance to get it caught up. So skills are, skills are taught in isolation and not applied to current learning. When you look at, let me go here, uh, core. Again, I'm not going to read this for, for everybody, uh, through the whole thing, but connection to core class instruction is connected to core, the core class. Uh, ongoing collaboration is emphasized. Instruction is typically I say from core class. What happens sometimes with remediation approaches is, is it becomes almost a replacement curriculum. And when you start teaching in isolation, then what happens is that gap does not close. If you're so focused on remediation, students still need to be exposed to grade level standards. Problem is, or the challenge I should say is, is that we have to tier it for some more than others. And we'll talk about again, like, when do you do that? How do you do that? And you're going to see some of the things. So, so again, I think one of the things when you look at is really, um, and I can probably do a whole evening on acceleration versus remediation and, and when is it appropriate, when it's not. But again, these are decisions we're going to have to make. So when, let me stop presenting that. Let's see. And I'm going to go. And I'm going to go back to this. All right, so hold on here. I think a key area is absolutely key is really your assessments. You know, you could have, you know, all kinds of standards and just different things and it becomes the abyss. It's like, okay, I keep, but, but, but really what assessments does is what needs to be taught and, and then measure what was actually learned. And so sometimes there's a, a model that we do backwards to design, so here's the assessments for this course, okay? And then I, I don't care if there's three teachers teaching it, is that this is what students will need to know by there and, and then assess how much they know. And you got to make sure that within that quarter, those things are, are done to be able to do that. So a, assessments could be used for so many different things, and I give some examples here, addressing learning loss. You gotta make the same decision, so say if we're having summer academy programs and we're putting students in third grade in these academies. To do fluency and just different things, well, so what's the assessment? What's the benchmark to be that these students, I don't say qualify, but that's, that, you know, they're in a certain range that they're going to need. Um, extended learning opportunities, um, you know, so you can use this, assessments are really key and they're not created equal. So I actually just kind of give some examples when it comes to assessments, there's, you know, a triangulation model and you can kind of read it there. Um, it takes your existing assessments and again, um, looking at write, do and say evidence. Um, teacher triangulates the assessments, includes their observations of the student, their conversations, and again, you can read that. So when you really look at assessments, I just think this is a, a key area, uh, especially with learning loss and acceleration, that we really need to have those. I'm going to give you just another example, you know, there's development of common assessments. So what happens is though, so you know, you might have three teachers teaching algebra one. So really what, what's that formative assessment that are they, does it look the same? Are they the same? We have the, they're great, we have three K three buildings. So is, is some of those summative assessments that are happening in third grade at Sunview for this skill. Um, happening at Roland and, and the same assessment happening over at Adrian. Because again, all those kids, that students, let them going into fourth grade and you gotta be able to have some measurable things. And so how, you know, are our assessments aligned? I believe we do have some alignment, but when you really need to really be transparent, this is how much alignment do we have? Because we have gaps in it, it's not, you know, you, you know, it's not going to move kids along. Uh, we won't have common language, we won't have common things that we're looking at. And so that's why I think in the assessment piece, you know, is important. We already have a response, RTI in our district, um, but the question becomes, I know that Greenview is doing some of it. But you know, is that something universally, is it, is it something universal that needs to be done K twelve? Or just it's worked better at a K six model? And again, those are decisions that need to be made, um, and, and we can't, you know, be operating in silos in that. So, you know, when you look at, um, a tiered approach, the last one or two data collection, you know, um, we don't, you know. What might work in K six does not necessarily mean it makes it a good, uh, assessment for ninth graders. And so I think that's the piece is really we need to outline more than ever. Be very transparent about the assessments that we select to make sure that we are utilizing data, you know, correctly. So again, that's just all under, you know, assess when you look at teaching. Um, and again, uh, some, sometimes you might look in, in, um, you know, when you, when you look at recovery and different things. You know, do we need to look at, um, the way that we approach our work? I'm not have, I, I have not changed anybody's assignments or done anything, anything like that. I presenting, when, when you're looking at certain things, um, we, when we think of it of intervention teacher, intervention specialist. We think of somebody, uh, who works with, has a caseload and works with students on, on I E Ps. Um, one of the things I think we missed the boat on, um, I'm, I'm actually trained in, uh, general education. And I also am certified K twelve, uh, special education. I think one of the things my special ed training really helped me with is really knowing how to differentiate my instruction. Know how to do, um, uh, do things differently because of my training there. Uh, but when you look at school psychologists, they are outstanding in looking at assessments. I'd be tapping into them, they are, they, they know data very well, um, intervention specialists, they look at. Um, again, they have to differentiate their, their instruction all the time, so I guess that's the theme looking at. We, we are really going to have to maximize the expertise, the people in our district. When you look at speech and language therapists, a lot of time they think they have, they have a caseload of kids, uh, which is important. But you know what, I had an outstanding one, was a building principal, she was outstanding with, with giving us ideas about literacy and literacy development. So I think that's the piece when we talk about redefining our roles, we have such a wealth of expertise. That we're really going to have to peel away to see how we, how we can utilize our human capital to really look at that piece. Um, you know, so, um, when you look at professional development. And I'm giving examples, he might, these might change, but you know, we have a continuous improvement days. So now the question becomes if we have this plan, you know, we really need to focus on stuff in this plan of, on, for our continuous improvement days. Our teachers, our administrators need to do the work. Um, if we talk about remediation versus acceleration, what does that really mean? You know, or if we talk about if we, uh, you know, K three, maybe all of our K three E L A teachers need to have a certain training that they, everybody fills. And, and to be able to do that, so, um, you know, developing an assessment is really an art, uh, you know. And, and that's why I kind of mentioned that's our school psychologist, I love to have in conversations with them, it's kind of like, oh, I, I didn't see it that way and what a great idea. And so we really have to make sure that we're developing, if we are using assessments, we're using the right ones for the right purpose. So there's no doubt going to have to be professional development that we're going to have to focus on. So one of the things you look at school design and schedules, and you can see six point one, I really like to develop some surveys. Uh, with, with teachers and, and I'm not sure the questions they ask, but I'd be curious what's really working that we're doing now? What needs to be changed, what can be enhanced, building administration and certainly with parents. Um, we definitely need to be tapped into looking at our school designs and schedules and certain things moving forward. Again, what I do here is I give you some examples, you know, really when I talk about learning acceleration period, what does that mean? So, you know, again, just, uh, really looking at a, maybe a period of thirty to forty five minutes, small group studying. Um, and really maybe usually what you want to do, especially in the elementary world, is really gap close those, um, you know, English. And E L A means English Language Arts, so it's reading and writing and then, and, and math. And again, when you look at school schedules, um, I gotta tell you what, collaboration time for teachers is really key. Um, yes, they have planning time and that's important as well. You know, how do you look at, and I throw an example out here, you know, and again, I'm not saying this could happen here. I mean, we certainly have to respect a collective bargaining agreement, but, um, what I do know is that, that, uh, because we're going to be looking at data more than ever. Um, and we're going to be planning it with things, we need to give folks time. So this is an example where it could happen during the, the, the school day. And you know, what happens that, that, that teachers need extended work sessions to analyze student data. Uh, adapt their curriculum for student and teacher needs and then build knowledge and, and then sometimes, you know, this could happen. By having an instructional leader, somebody who's a teacher, someone still, who's still in the classroom. Um, one of the ideas somebody threw out to me last week, a talk with the teachers, maybe it's somebody that teaches part time and also does instructional coaching part time. Because it's got to be somebody that's in the trenches. So again, I do believe when you talk about a recovery plan, is that you, you, we, we can't just do it the same way. We have, may have to come up with some creative schedules that allows for planning, allows for acceleration. Um, and allows for that collaboration. Um, so the, again, another piece is there's no doubt we're going to have, have to have student support and intervention in two areas. The first area I'm going to talk about is the academic area. And all the pieces of literature that you read is that we're also going to have to address, we do it very well in here. Uh, is really, we've already been doing the social emotional needs, so I don't want you to think I'm, I'm not hitting that part. Um, you know, E L Os are extended learning opportunities, uh, we talk about summer academies. Um, what, what, what I would like to do is, and, and, and really what, um, we need to address too, what does that go look like for special ed? What, what does it look like for high school? I know Mr. Cable, maybe this is a good chance because I'd like, I think it's good to have a visual. I think one of the things we talk about summer academies, we, we know that some of our kids have also not, uh, been able to have the music that they've wanted. Um, and, and some of the other, what they call an encore programs, and, and really we, what we want to approach. This recovery learning as a holistic approach, not just the four core areas. So Mr. Cable, if I stop presenting, do you have an example of maybe what a summer academy could look like? And how we kind of integrate recovery, learning and opportunities for like all the areas? I know you showed me something the other day. All right, then I'll stop presenting, okay?
All right, so thanks, Dr. Reed, uh, this is a little snapshot, I just pulled it off our Excel sheet. Um, summer E L O plan, like Dr. Reed said, um, again, this is a draft, please don't mark this, mark this in red. What we're looking at is incorporating not only the E L A and the math into the day. But also really trying to incentivize, incentivize and make this a social emotional learning time as well. Uh, we set, set aside dollars as well to have additional supports in there for the social emotional. Uh, possible dean, possible counselor, just some different avenues. And also when I met with Ms. Bussy and Ms. Thompson, um, really looking for that, that hook for these kiddos. So I know they're still, they're hesitant, um, with some of these kids haven't been in school since almost a year now, uh, believe it or not. So really trying to get them in and not only close that achievement gap, but also get that hook, make it more fun, see those kids out and about. With the social emotional piece, so we were looking at, as you can see here, pretty simple. But breakfast in morning arrival, um, keeping that incentive, morning meeting with the principals, one thing I've learned in my new role. How important that is for these kids and their social emotional needs. Uh, dive into E L A, go into a movement break, back to math and then the boom. So, uh, this was named by Ms. Bussy, so thank you. But really that hook at the end of the day and incentivize those kiddos, whether it's a dance, COVID friendly, whether it's bounce houses. Whether it's incentives, clubs, different things, and then that conversation led into bringing in J C commander to the conversation. And offering camps after our summer academies completed. So we would love to have theme weeks, so we would have a music week, we would have an art week, we would have sports week. And we could even intertwine those based off that. And also for the parents, you know, as they're getting adapted after the COVID, is, this is a nice schedule, eight thirty to three. Um, we will incorporate academics, scope, a social motion, we're going to incorporate fun and social skills. So just that little bit, um, of a snapshot that we're looking at. Um, the schedule that we're contemplating right now would give the teachers a week off and the students a week off after school. Come back for two weeks, take fourth of July week off and come back for two more and then we'll dive into August at a later time. But this was the beginning focus, um, it's been collaborative, I'm actually presenting this to the D L T, getting feedback from them. Um, been, met with Matthew Bryan and Megan Young today and we're talking about the fourth quarter E L Os, um, which Dr. Reed mentioned earlier too. So a lot going on, a lot of good, um, our kiddos deserve it and we're going to figure it out.
May I just say, it, so this would be an extension of the school year? This wouldn't be, um, just kids who, to choose to, to be part of this?
Oh, no, Dr. Reed, you want?
Yeah, I know, this would have to be kind of like a, and, and, and the previous years, we used to call it summer school, but we, we can't approach it like that. So no, it would not be altering the contract of, of the teachers, it would be in addition. But again, we, 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 we really want to incentivize that, you know, we have many students who have huge gaps that we want them to come in the summertime. You know, and incorporate, um, the needs of the whole child, again, the music, the art and, and reading a math, especially for the elementary kids. So no, it would, it would not be an extension of, yeah. Okay.
And these are, Dr. Reed talked about, um, this is kind of the meat. So when she was talking earlier about the data that we have to look at, that what focus standards are we looking at? So presenting this template to the principals, um, was put together, uh, by myself, Mr. Fuller and his team over at Roland. This is really gets down to the data pieces, so what quantitative and qualitative data concerning this E L O. So whether it's math, whether it's an E L A, and we might even build and incorporate some science in there. And then you go down and as you're going through it, students below data threshold, students with low attendance, students with low ability, what specific standards? And then what assessment are we going to have? So when a student walks in, what piece of data are we going to use? And then how are we going to show growth and how are we going to track that student? Not only see what's working, but also see if that student's becoming a higher achiever as we go. So we're going to have this lined up so we can show parents, we can show teachers as these kids come into the fall. This is where they're at, came through our program and this is where we got to get to. And that's all I have, Dr. Reed.
Okay, okay, all right, I will, um, send it again.
So when you say that while you're clicking, um, Dr. Reed, I just have a question and.
Sure.
So as I spent the days reading through this, um, quite naturally, it's, it's massive. I mean, what we're dealing with, with children after the pandemic is going to be massive. But where, and I'm not saying that we're not thinking, so don't interpret it as that. But where are we evaluating? And evaluation might be a wrong word, where are we looking at and trying to make sure we stay tuned into the capacity of staff? Um, sure, I, we got all, we, we, we're trying to get all the stuff for the kids, they haven't been in here for a year. Um, we know they're behind, but are we, how, how are we tracking the, just the mental stability of our staff and our teachers? And I say that in also saying, these measures in yellow are great. But what does that look like as far as people? I know we spent a lot of time with, um, Continenza, bringing in extra stuff, bringing in extra people for professional development. Does COVID funds let you bring in extra people to kind of clear some of this load?
Well, we're, I have to tell you, we, uh, we are almost to that spot, um, if I could, if, when you go through it, you know, absolutely. Because you'll see in the end that they're actually, you know, when we look at whatever our priorities are, think of this as this. Think of this as a brainstorm of things that have to be looked at, okay? Cause some of that piece, but the, but it also is going to take, um, some extra help and support to be able to do. So, uh, uh, for President Jones to answer your question before we get there, yes, it, it does allow, and there's going to be. Potential things that are going to be needed to be able to support something like this, okay? We can't, you know, like, Mr. Cable, he has, he has a, a regular thing, this is actually going to take s- a focus for, I can't keep adding more onto that. There's also going to be extra help that's going to be needed, you'll see on different levels. No, no, you're, you're.
With a whole bunch of people, but. Conductors are sick and stressed out, like.
You, you're almost, you're almost, you're, you're on the right, you're on the right track, and we're actually almost to that point. But so, so when you look at seven point two here, is to answer your first question about the teachers, the capacity. We definitely have to identify support systems as social emotional. Here's where I kind of see is, it's not just all about the students. I think we have to also look at where, you know, where our staff is at, you know, we can't just pile on more and just different things. So I do think, you know, um, you know, one of the ideas here, you know, the family meetings is like what the students do. But are there care teams, you know, we have a, you know, Ms. Thompson and her folks have a great, uh, support system. But you know, do we develop care teams for the buildings? And that's just an example of how we take care of that piece of not the students, but really care teams is about the staff. And what are some of the things that we do there? Um, you know, so, and again, I'll try, I'll try to go back through, but I want to kind of move through and get through holistic special education, that is another conversation. Um, you know, again, we need to really do a, a needs assessment, um, uh, what do we want to focus on? And you got to remember, even when we do our strategic plan, it's usually a five year plan. This is going to be a multi-year plan too, and we're going to have the tendency to want to put, everything has to happen in the first year. That's not a reality, that's why we're going to have to prioritize. We cannot do everything, but we're going to have to prioritize certain things. But when I go to the next one and look at this piece, I think there are some things. So when we look at, they call them encore specialists, and I named them, their music arts STEM is, is, um, seen more at the elementary level. Uh, the, the science, technology, engineering and math and P E, and then our L R C is, is your, your library services. But I've given you one example where I think this, remember, I'm going to take you back, we're in a recovery phase here. So the question becomes, and I'm giving example, the music program is, you know, um, not just S C L, the music programs. And this is just actually one part of the music program is called band, because that's not everything. Is the fact that matters, if, if, and I always believe in this, you don't improve by chance. You have to make sure that you are very deliberate of what you want to improve on. So, you know, the band numbers I'm sure are down, I talk across super tents everywhere, everywhere. So the question becomes is how do we, we, we cover? Not just but from pre, you know, to pre-COVID levels, maybe even beyond, because, you know, the numbers were small. Is, you know, one thing is how are we going to increase numbers? What are going to be these strategies? Who's responsible? How do we know we were successful? Um, you know, with STEM, you know, K three, we kind of had to put that on hold a little bit as a standalone outside the classroom. Because we needed staff, um, for various reasons to be able to do various things. So what I guess what I'm saying is the focus is, is that how do we look at, um, you know, making sure that our encore classes. Our encore kids need that, how are we going to make sure we? How are we going to make sure we're going to address that in our school day? Or even, you know, catching up lost time? So again, you know, that's, that's an area. And this is where, where we also look at recovery, and this is why I know it seems massive, but I'm going to be honest with you. What I like about it is there are a lot of folks that aren't even planning to this level. We need to be able to plan, again, I look at us as an organization, as a company. If we don't look at all those pieces here and we leave it to chance, not only are we going to not take advantage of this opportunity of this federal dollars coming in stimulus dollars. Okay, when the external accountability systems come in, meaning our state report card and other things come in, it's going to be a hammer coming down. Right now, we're in a little of a safe harbor, and in fact, as we've got to be able to address these things. But you look at co-curricular, so the fact of the matter is that, you know, really, we don't do all of our co-curricular things. How are we going to recover and rebuild the interest in some of our co-curriculars? It can't be all of them, so we need to prioritize. District sponsored groups, you know, when you talk about recovery, I mean, there's, you know, PTAs, I think some are functioning, some are struggling, and some have found some newfound growth. So, you know, I think those are some of the things as we can't forget about these pieces of our organization. And right now, community groups, we're all about partnerships, but because of COVID, we've actually limited it to our bubble of, you know, of just not having our YMCA's and other folks come in because basically, you know, of making sure our staff is vaccinated first. So again, these are things that I hope people find out is not to make your head spin, but to know, you know what? We could put a plan together to make sure as a school district that we are, we think it out. Um, this kind of gets to, because Hannah, to your question of resilience or moving forward. I think it's one of some of those transformative changes we have, irreversible things. I'm not even saying I've touched upon it, because I don't know all the things. There's other folks that can be, you know, put in, put in here. But I think one of the things you look at is, you know, you know, flexible work schedules or flexibility for students. I'm finding out that because people have lost their jobs, you know, is there going to be flexibility for students who have to, instead of having to study hall, they have to go to their job at two o'clock in the afternoon? I don't have all the answers. I think that's the piece when we have to look at surveying our families and surveying their needs and surveying our staff and what their needs are. And so that's the thing where we go is, you know, what have we discovered about ourselves? I mean, one other example is, I think, what the feedback I was getting is that parent engagement in some cases actually increased during this time of COVID, where we had an unbelievable amount of parent teacher conferences, and it just worked for people's work schedules better. So, you know, do we want to always, do we want to continue that option? Um, you know, what does a school design day look like? We talked about it earlier. Maybe there's some things that we never thought we, well, could do that we found out really helps student growth. It helps some of the things that we do, and we can look at that. You know, I mean, totally transparent here, you know, we, virtual learning, what does it really mean moving forward? We have, we have families, you know, we've always done school-based. We've had some families who the virtual learning is working. Again, these are not my opinions. This is just things about, you know, our job is we serve. And so again, I think those are some of the things that we have to survey and we have to figure out what does that look like? Well, we found out we've actually in some cases do virtual learning very, very well. And I think our staff has done a nice job adapting. I know there's some folks, and I won't, I had to laugh, they're like, I just want to go back to paper and pencil. I'm so tired of the virtual thing, you know, and so there's, there's other things like that. So when you look at, at pieces here, when you look at stuff, to your question about supporting thing, is I've kind of got a mixture of brainstorming things that might, potential positions that might be needed. You know, when you talk about leadership, you know, there's no doubt, there's, there's going to have to be somebody with an expertise of assessment, school improvement initiatives. We talk about our summer academies. It's going to take people. It's going to take. The reason I put administrative license and certified teacher license, I think one of the nice things here, don't naturally think it has to be one of our principals running the summer academies. We have a number of teachers who have their principal's license, who maybe are not quite ready or don't know if they are. We're going to test the waters. What better way to allow leadership to happen than, you know, having them run one of our summer academies? I think we have Mr. Miller, he told me, got a while ago, but like maybe about thirty of our teachers. Um, the certification is those actual teachers that are going to teach a certain areas. So ELL coordinators, let me just give an example here. That is, if you run an after-school program, you'll have teachers that actually teach the program. In my last district, we had teacher leaders who actually were kind of like the principal of the after-school program. Um, you know, there's a position called acceleration teaching specialist. I don't, and that is, again, getting it to accelerate learning. And, you know, there's actually a job description for it and different things. So those are, when I say leadership, those are different things and don't actually think always administrator. That's why I use the word leadership. So when you talk about instruction, we are going to need folks with regards to, there's going to have to be some, some assistance and support for teaching staff. Um, you know, we look at possibly special endorsements like technology to be able to, you know, help our teachers, our reading specialists and cover the achievement gap there. Mr. Cable talked about, you know, I put it under enrichment. That's just the way that I saw it because it's optional. But really look at our summer theme camp instructors. Uh, you know, you saw that day that he presented. And, you know, really look at reading and math, but really having maybe, you know, art week or, or music or STEM and just some of the different things. So really, when you look at the far right column is, that's really when you look at Title One, S R one, S R two. Those are all things to answer your question that these federal stimulus dollars that districts are getting is to be able to recover and relieve in, in the whole child. So it's not just, you know, I mean, not just the reading of math and academics. So that's the piece where I started out to say that, you know, putting a plan together, prioritizing what it is, is really being able to address critical areas. Some of these young. Yellow pieces might go away if you, you know, because. Yellow pieces might go away. If you notice, some are actually repeated because they actually, they work in tandem together. So it's not like a new area, and it's just something is. So again, I know this was some, I don't usually like to talk this much, but I think I wanted to present it holistically and then maybe answer some questions and, again, continue the conversations with other stakeholders in our district.
It's understandable. Um, any other thoughts from board members? It's a lot to swallow. I've been reading a couple of days.
I mean, it's very comprehensive and, I mean, you know. Yeah, like I said, I mean, there's a lot, a lot to cover. And I'm glad that you all have thought ahead so much and put so much time and effort into this as opposed to just asking for the money, because you're right. I mean, if we don't plan and we need to pivot, I mean, it's, we're not going to help anybody. And I'm glad that there is, you know, discussion obviously about, you know, that you've already shared it with Celta a little bit and, you know, started to get them involved in the process and you continue to work with all the various stakeholders that have obviously been, you know, pointed out in the highlighted areas so that it is a collaborative effort to try to help these, you know, everybody move forward from this. Because, I mean, it's a whole different world. No one could have expected this, and there's no plan book for getting out of it. So, thank you.
I will. One of the comments, we had a meeting with our federal grants coordinator liaison, and I was in that meeting with Mr. Cable, Mr. Hill, and Ms. Thompson, myself. And what I talked to him about was, you know, a couple of things people need to know. When you, when you get federal dollars and different things, first of all, and I did that for seven years when I was in Garford Heights. And there's, you've got to remember, when you're given that money too, there's also needs to be, you know, things that, that will be audit, and there has to be appropriate uses of what we do. And what he says, when I talked to him about putting a plan together, you know, we're the only school district that he deals with, that actually talked about a plan, and he was excited to see what the plan was going to be about. And I think that's the piece, it's really important. Yes, it's massive, but what we have to take on is pretty massive. And if we don't have a plan and a focus and prioritize, we are all going to feel overwhelmed with regards to. And this, and money has, when you get stimulus dollars, it has an end date. So you want to capitalize on everything you can do to be able during that time. And you don't want to give a cent or a dollar back. Unless you plan for it, you're going to be finding, people are going to be scrambling to spend money, and then going to be throwing it in areas that are not going to get banged for the buck. No.
Linda, you mentioned having, possibly having a K-12 teacher-led possibly group that would align curriculum and make sure that we're building. We did have that several years ago in language arts, where we met, I think, once a month or, you know, four times a year. I can't remember exactly. Which was very effective, just kind of sharing from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, you know, what, what teachers were doing and how they built on each other, you know, the previous year's work and what was being learned. So it was, you know, I'm excited to think that we might be able to do something like that again.
Sure. And one of the things, and this is what, I mean, I rely on those in the trenches. This is not something, I can't tell you when the teachers, our teacher leaders and our folks like that, that and our teachers are really the ones that can look at it. We're going to have to look at our current pace. I don't believe in reinventing the world. If we got good stuff out there, what we're going to have to do, Ms. Falcone, is look at what we maybe have that we feel is good. But we're going to have to look at a new lens where I think one of the, the high school social studies teacher, Mr. Maskell, would say, you know, the other day is that, you know, typically he would be teaching, you know, World War One this time of the year, whatever, and yet he's, he's not there. Not because he, he doesn't want to be there or that piece. And I think that's, we are finding out is what we've typically been at a certain year is that's not it. So, so, you know, how are we going to move forward from, from that as well? And I think that's when we look at current pacing, guys, is really what are going to be some of those essential things? When I talk to an elementary teacher, what they'd be looking at, if I got, got three third grades coming into fourth grade, I guess what we'd be looking at is, what are those essential skills that those third graders need to get into fourth grade? Not all of them. And they can tell you, these fourth grade teachers will tell you it's going to be this. So then what you have to do is now communicate that back to the third grades from Sunview, Adrian, and Roland, and make sure that when they do, so that's why I'm talking about backwards, you know, design and play like this. I mean, like I said, we take what we have and what we know, but we're going to have to prioritize. It's a pandemic. We've never done this before, you know, and, and so, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask you a question, Catherine? Sometimes I, I forget, not forget, I kind of forget the fact that you used to be in these shoes teaching. So I want to ask you, if you were in this position teaching right now on this year of the pandemic, if you had an opportunity to have consultants come in and do some of that work with helping screen children, see where they are, see what kind of interventions need to be done to help move that along to allow you to try to regain your bearings, to focus back on teaching, would that be helpful for you?
Oh, I think so. Yes, having, having students be assessed for their, you know, what they've learned, what they've maybe lost would make it helpful, I think, for the teachers to, to determine where to move them.
I'm just kind of think, I'm trying to expand my mind and my thought process of, of just breaking down it in different levels. So you have, and I mean, I'm not saying we hire a boatload of consultants, but at the same time, with COVID money that is there, like that typical piece of where teachers sit in a room and kind of exchange where these teach, where these kids are, where they're going, who's going to be in my class next year, almost if you can have some consultants that with this pandemic background and their specialty, they'd be able to kind of vet some of that. They'd be up even on that level with teachers, and then you got principals. I mean, I'm even thinking now, like, building schedules. If you can take something off of the guidance counselors or the principals or the assistant principals to allow them to focus on getting their buildings back to normal and helping ease that social emotional piece, that's one less hand that they have to keep dumping the coals on their head. And then when you think at a district level, yeah, we got our assistant superintendents, yeah, they're going full-fledged ahead. But to have COVID money to be able to bring some consultants in that maybe used to be assistant superintendents for years, and they have the specialty and the background. They come in, give Melissa and Dom some of that pressure, release some of that pressure where they can just kind of focus on honing in and making sure things work that are on that paper. And just all the way up, I'm just trying to think what that looks like and trying to be proactive instead of everybody looking up and we're all burnt out because they're trying to move forward, stay ahead, and recoup from back. So I take that for granted to asking you some of that sometime.
Right. I think it's going to be, I mean, some kids have done very well, as Dr. Reed, you pointed out. And, you know, during this, this time, and, and other kids are really flailing, you know, have just really struggled. So I think it would be probably very helpful.
And that's, you're saying the students, I like, just like you mentioned how the students are. I know we have some teachers that have totally lost it, and they're trying to hold it together by a thread. And then you've got some that's excelling, and they might be excelling so well, but they still don't have the wherewithal to dump it into their co-friends over here because they're trying to survive. It's just crazy how many different levels are really being impacted. And I appreciate the fact that this administration is trying to look and get ahead of the train like we've always done.
Right. Not just their learning levels, it's, it's, as you pointed out, Linda, what, where they are socially, emotionally. You know, I was talking with some teachers and we were saying, you know, it used to be that we could, we'd stand in the hallway between classes and talk to students and find out what was going on in their home, you know, what they were doing in their sports or whatever plays. We don't have, they don't have that now. The teachers don't have that ability to really connect the way they did.
I think one, what, yeah, I think one of the comments, I took some notes from my meeting the other day with the teacher leadership. And I think, I think what you're going to see, that's why I use the word potential. I think, I think we got to figure out where our needs are and where we need our supports. Well, some of the things I think you are going to see that we can do in-house, and we have in-house expertise. And some of the things, it's going to be bigger than people. I think that's the piece. When you look at, one of the comments that was made to me, especially when it comes to instructional practices, is one of the teachers made a comment that, that because teaching is such a personal thing, is that they feel that in order to get that feedback from somebody, it's got to be somebody that they trust. And typically, that's somebody that is a colleague, a trusted colleague in the district and different things. So I think what you're going to see is really, we're showing is a variety. I mean, there's going to be some folks right in our own district who are able to, you know, we're able to tap into, their roles might be redefined, and you've got to remember, we've lost some enrollment. So the fact of the matter is maybe instead of, you know, eliminating something, redefine a role for a person to be able to do something, technology is going to be really big, you know? We've got some great folks out there. So, so what I'm showing is, I think it's going to take a variety. I think it's going to be folks that actually have in-house experts that'll work better and other ones that it's going to be bigger. You know, you talk about scheduling and just different things. You need to be an expert in that. It's not just about plucking kids in the classroom. It's really about, when you, when you write, when you do a schedule, it's really one of your priorities. You know, when you think about special ed, you think about, you know, you know, the courses and different things, and you build it around there. But then if you just look at that as a building piece, you talk about rebuilding a music program, that's going to take just more than building a schedule at the high school. That's going to be looking at building at something at K-12 to be able to make sure that, that one hand is, you know, taking care of, but the other part isn't, and it doesn't work. So I think that's the piece where, you know, again, I'm sharing what was shared with me the other day, you know, and, you know, and again, if you look at the summertime, it all depends, you know? We have some folks that are going to want to do it. And then we might think that these summer camps are great, but we were able to get a lot of people in one encore area, but another encore area we couldn't get because of family reasons. Well, then we're going to have to go with somebody from the outside, because if our priority is that we still want to, we want to make sure we offer the music, the STEM, the wellness and the art, and maybe our, our staff is tapped out and, or that piece, and that's when we might have to go outside. Because if we feel that's a priority, you know, obviously, we always want to go inside first. But there are going to be things that I think will be a combination depending on supply and demand.
It's going to be, it's going to be a strategy. I mean, to me, it feels like it's going to be a strategy, and it's almost equivalent. and it's almost equivalent to having our whole district burnt down to rubble. Like, that's literally what it feels like this pandemic has done. It boiled districts all the way down to almost nothing. A year of not having all your kids in the buildings, like you're almost started, it's strategy. It's going to be strategists coming in, trying to figure out what does it take to rebuild. It's almost going to be like somebody to come in just to vet your community to see what it is that they need and what they want. That's a massive task. So, okay.
I, I, I should have Melissa, you're, you're, you're my box here. When I, when we were talking about it the first time, she got so excited. She's like, because she could see it, you know, and um, you know, yeah, there you go. Yeah. I can't say it like you do, but I, I don't know if you want to share your thoughts, Melissa, with regards to um, some of the things you look at, the social emotional piece and.
Oh, sure, sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So it's exciting for me, um, because I am a planner. Like the, the opportunity for us to really look at and revisit um, where we are, not be reactive. Um, you know, certainly as Dr. Reed has indicated with the funds that we're receiving, but be very thoughtful in our planning. Um, and looking at how best to maximize those resources. And um, certainly, um, I want to just, you know, comment to the point of supporting our teachers. Um, in a meeting last week and last few weeks I've had with our school counselors and social workers, um, that has really been near and dear on our collective hearts, I would say, of how are we attending to that support to our staff and even wanting to create opportunities for that check-in and that level of, of encouragement, support to them. Recognizing that these are unprecedented times and it is very stressful. And um, you know, in, in needing to also help them with that inspiration and that encouragement. Um, it, it has to be very frustrating in, in all of the work that they're doing to, to prepare and plan every day. And knowing that sometimes our students are, for a variety of reasons, not in a position to receive what it is that's being shared and recognizing that, that that's, that's hard, you know? And how to inspire and encourage and keep our staff, um, you know, uh, supported i- in the process. So this is an exciting time, you know, certainly, um, COVID, um, not an exciting situation. You know, however, um, it has created the opportunity for us to press pause to some degree and look at this, um, our, our, our plan, you know, and, and build all the strengths of our awesome staff. And, and, you know, what we need to do differently, better, um, and do more of, less of, start doing, stop doing. So it's right i- in my space. I am a box. I'll have to share with everyone what we're referring to. There's this symbols exercise that I like to do that speaks to personality type and style. And um, Bill and I are boxes. And so when you think about the logistics and planning that went in to play for this vaccination, um, planning, we're, we're boxes. We like the order, we want the plan. We, we're strategists. Um, we, we like and understand and appreciate that metrics conversation. You know, uh, what's the return on investment and why and what are we doing? So we appreciate that challenge and that, that pushback. So, um, so certainly this is, this is one of those things that under difficult circumstances, it is giving us an opportunity to reimagine and revision, you know, what we need to do for our students and our staff and our families. So, but I'm excited, ready to roll.
I, I know we kept you a little bit longer than I, than I thought it would be, but again, um, I, I'd like to, I, I'll take more questions, but I, I just want to kind of recap a few things. I mean, obviously, um, we have to have a plan, uh, you know, and, and we do have a board adopted strategic plan, but there are parts now that we need to shift gears and this is kind of mirrors what we've done. Um, we are, uh, again, uh, nothing has been decided, but what has, has been decided is we, we do need a plan. We will seek input. Um, uh, for those of you just coming in a little bit later, we, we do, we utilize our federal dollars for again, COVID, pandemic and recovery. Um, it has to be a multi-year plan. Uh, and, you know, without a plan, we're not going to be able to maximize what we can do. Obviously, we need input, um, and obviously COVID is going to make our job a little bit more difficult. Um, I, I do think we'll do it with surveys, we'll do it with some focus groups. Um, we can't let anything be a barrier. We, we, you know, um, you know, nobody's done this before. And, and I like to think that uh, with our plan, that we have a chance to really, um, not just recover, but um, that's not good enough. We need to be able to thrive and that's what I hope this plan will do as well.
Any other questions or comments? No. Hearing none. Um, I believe that's all for your discussion items. We do have a need for executive session. I do apologize. It took me
It'll be short.
Five hours to send out that message, but um, I got it out and we can uh, make a motion to go into executive session for the matters of, we're allowed to go into executive session for matters of personnel litigation, personal property negotiations, security or matters to be kept confidential by law or state statutes. And we will be entering this session for personnel. We will not be taking any action for those of you that are listening. So we will um, be adjourning this public work session and we will be going into executive session. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you all for trusting us with your children and your families. And we look forward to the um, upward movement that we're starting to imagine and experience. May we get a motion?
So moved.
It is now seven sixteen. May we get a roll call for that?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberry?
Aye.
Ms. Blumberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.